Father, we want to thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon our city. And as we look to the new year, we ask that your guidance and continued blessings on our families, on our schools, our businesses, and our churches. In 2022, let the deliberations of this body and the conversations in this community be honest by taking away our fear, but can be wise by taking away our thoughtlessness and kindness, by taking away our indifference and hostilities towards one another. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is January 3rd, 2022, and I'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I know that Clara has asked that Item 2 under H Ordinance and Resolutions be removed so that we can discuss that in a closed session at an upcoming meeting. So we won't be discussing that this evening, and I'll call on Andrew Bremseth for any other additions or corrections.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers. Good evening. I'm not sure if that's working, but, um, perfect. Councilwoman Kwame has requested that we remove Item Number 4 from the consent agenda and just have a quick conversation about that separate.
Got it.
Could I ask for Number 8 to me?
You bet. 8 and 4, any others from the consent agenda? Seeing those and then removing Item 2 under H, I would ask for a motion to approve that amended agenda.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening. There are no petitions and communications under the consent agenda. We have eight remaining items, and I would look for a resolution to approve those eight items.
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Caroline.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item Number 4 is a discussion on a resolution designating the 2022 depositories. And Scott, did you want to lead off that discussion?
Sure. Just wanted to make a couple comments, and then I'm, I don't know if it's possible to delay the depository assignment or not, so that would be a question. Or if it's something that needs to be done tonight because of some legal reason or whatever. The depositories that are listed, Galliard Capital Management, League of Minnesota Cities, 4M Fund, US Bank, and Wells Fargo are probably fine, and I'm sure we've done business with them without any issues. I guess I would like to see, if it was possible, some of the smaller, more regional or local banks included in what the city does business with. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to, you know, at least run, say, our payroll or some department through, you know, one of our smaller, local, or regional banks rather than dealing with some of these that are big, faraway places.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, Bill.
Should I address that?
Yeah, I'd love if you did, Bill. Thank you.
So first, answer to the first question as far as do we need to act on this tonight? Yes, we do need to do that. It is under Minnesota statute that the city council designate your depositories every year, and we do that at the beginning of the year, and our auditors check that every year. So it is important that we do that. If we were to make any changes in the future, then you would, you know, change this resolution then at that time. Now, we used to, prior to being with the 4M Fund, we used to go out for proposals on certificates of deposits, so we were always doing CDs within the city. Well, as we know, rates tanked over the years, and we're better off earning more money in the League of Minnesota Cities 4M Fund. Now, the 4M Fund, US Bank is the custodian of those funds, so PMA Capital is the actual manager over the League 4M Fund, so all of that's run through the League of Cities, of which the city is a member of that. We also get our property liability insurance and our workers' comp through the League. So as you know, we're, we work with the League and it goes pretty well. The 4M Fund is kind of like, almost like a mutual fund, where it's a pool is what it is. And then the League oversees that, PMA manages those funds according to Minnesota statutes, we are, as cities, restricted by what we can invest in according to Minnesota statutes 118A. So US Bank is the only option, if we're going to be in the 4M Fund, for banking for that. The city also, we have one large account that we run this through, so payroll runs the same, in the same account as our accounts payable does. So I would not want to start opening separate accounts and then, you know, we would, in essence, you know, then that's more staff needs to reconcile all that as well. So it works well with one account. So if we were to make a change, then we would be leaving the 4M Fund and thus leaving US Bank. We would go out for proposals to see what other banks are doing. We used to do that periodically. Go out for banks, you know, we were with Community First for years, changed the Bank of the West. We'd go out for proposals. But with that, that would actually change kind of the structure, you know, we have right now probably $10 million in the 4M Fund for our more liquid funds. Now, we are approached by banks periodically, but we'd want to look at that. We also basically receive no fees from US Bank because of the link with the League of Cities. We historically used to probably pay about $14,000 to $16,000 a year in fees for banking services, so we've saved those fees. That's been some of that argument for just staying the way we are from the financial standpoint, but I won't go on any longer. That's just a very high level with that for banking, but, so yes, definitely I want you to adopt this resolution, and then we could talk as a city council, if you'd like us to explore proposals and looking at for the future. Again, in our rate environment, 4M has been very good. 4M, of course, works with cities across the state as well, too, as it's part of the League of Cities, but I'll shut up now. I probably took too long.
It's good to hear that explanation, but I appreciate that. Someone like to offer resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Scott, did that answer your questions?
Yeah. Yeah, that answered the questions. I think that if we were to have a conversation about this down the road, it would be worthwhile, and it would probably gain some interest from our local banks.
Yep. I agree.
Side note, our Assistant Finance Director and I will be meeting with the local bank in January now. They just want to meet and talk about their services and how things would look in comparison to what we have. That's not a proposal, they're just coming in to visit with us, so after we do that, maybe we can see, would we go out for a proposal? And of course, we'd come back to the council for authority to do that, so.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Scott. Any other questions for Bill? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Let's see, Item Number 8 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a workforce housing development application on behalf of Campus View Estates. Anthony, did you have?
Yeah, I'd just like to know a little bit about, a little bit more about what it actually is and what the money would be used for.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, it's $195,000, and obviously, there's some matching funds that we have to do, but it's like, what are we going to do with it?
Sure. Thanks, Anthony. Clara?
Yeah, I can address that, thank you. So the funds would be going toward the costs of the actual building of the units themselves, and then the matching funds that we have designated right now would be from the overall project costs, which would also include the costs of the infrastructure that are going in, because that's how the city is going to be involved in this, is through the infrastructure part of it. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what, so it's basically would be like a grant to the property?
Exactly. Yep. They have two different ways that they do it through this program. They can do it as a grant, they can also do it as a forgivable loan, but you indicated at the very beginning, do you want it as a grant or as a forgivable loan, and so we're going the grant route.
Right.
So it wouldn't change, just so I'm clear to you.
Yeah.
Thanks. It wouldn't change the city's investment in infrastructure regard, related to the project?
Okay.
If awarded, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara.
With that, I'll make the motion.
Resolution, thank you, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista, any other questions for Clara? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Under Ordinance and Resolutions, tonight, we have three items, first being a first reading of Ordinance 238 series establishing a 90-day study period in moratorium on the construction enlargement or expansion of motels, hotels, and apartment hotels. We discussed that at the last meeting, and I'll just let our city planner, Karen Palm, give us some data on that.
What's Karen talking about? Could we understand a little bit more why? Because I kind of was thinking about this, and, you know, we promote ourselves as trying to be business-friendly, but something like a moratorium says, I mean, there's nothing more descriptive than a moratorium to say, no, we're not going to do that. And, you know, I'd like to understand why we have to do a moratorium as opposed to if somebody wants to change the use of it? Why couldn't that go through a normal process of planning commission or rezoning? I mean, it's just the context of saying no. I mean, you know, we're meant to be Fergus Falls, yes, we all got a yes button, where we were kind of going to be more positive about our approaches. Monitoriums come over as being negative. We're not going to do that. And 90 days is a long time, and so, you know, we do 90 days for the moratorium itself, and then we've got to review it, so by the time we're done, that's going to be 180 days. That's, you know, six months, and, you know, basically, we just put up, you know, a big no-entry sign that we don't want you in Fergus Falls. So I'd like to understand why we have to go a moratorium route as opposed to what other options are available to us.
Sure. Thanks, Anthony.
Sure. So this would be the study period to update the definitions. So we received many calls, particularly about extended stay, and we weren't really able to give any good guidance. And so, to my knowledge, that property is still on the market despite a lot of interest and questions that we've received because we can't provide that clarity. And so, by doing the study period, and just to clarify, and Rolf can jump in if I, you know, misspeak, but the moratorium would expire after 90 days, so it could be extended, but the intention is that the work is completed and planning commission would come back with suggested changes within that 90-day period. Is that correct, Rolf?
That's correct, and in part, if their application came through requesting a hotel apartment to be constructed on, at that location, I think staff's position would be is it's not allowed under our zoning currently.
Yeah.
But it's not clear. And so, the purpose of the study is to, A, determine, is this something that you want in that zone? B, does the ordinance need, or does the zoning code need to be changed to allow it or to be specifically not allowed in that zone? So the purpose of the study is to empower the planning commission to study this further and come back with a recommendation to the council, and Karen's right, is that it's a 90-day period. They can come back and request an extension on that, but that will be your approval. The only way the moratorium could be extended beyond 90 days is with council authority to extend it. So once the 90 days are up and if it isn't extended, it's done, the moratorium ends.
And as far as a rezoning, if someone were interested to come forward with a rezoning application, this would not affect that process. This would only be for creating a new motel, hotel, or apartment hotel. So it wouldn't affect anything currently operating under these either, it would just be new or expansions.
So why do we want to do it, then? I mean, if they can, if they can, somebody can buy it and make it a hotel or motel, then, I mean, why can't we do the two things concurrently?
So I think the intention is that we wouldn't want someone to purchase the property without the understanding that this is being examined, that otherwise, they may not be aware.
So who's going to complete the study?
This is the planning commission. So we have sent the planning commission background information, and they would receive some additional information and materials for discussion at their January 24th meeting. And the materials that we sent them also advised that a special meeting of the planning commission, they typically only meet once a month, would probably be advisable if they wanted to do further questions or research. So we did that last year before I came with the solar ordinance as well, when that was near finalization. There were some special meetings of the planning commission to help move that process along a little bit quicker.
I still think that the word "moratorium" says no, so I don't think I'm going to vote for it, so.
And tonight, we just have a first round, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but I mean, that's, so that's another month, so then it gets, so basically, now it's not really 90 days, it's going to be 120 days.
You could make an application right now.
Yeah.
And it doesn't take effect until a week after, 15 days after the publication, Lynn knows this best, but after the second reading. So, I mean, technically, if someone wanted to say, I don't care if it's unclear, I'm going to still apply for it, there's nothing we can do to stop that until the moratorium is effective.
Yeah.
So just so I understand, I missed the committee hold, so I apologize, so thanks for getting me up to speed, but, so as I understand it, it's not going to impede the current business, it's giving more clarity if somebody wanted to purchase the property for a different use or an undefined use that it currently is not very clear, it would have more clarity for a new business owner to purchase.
Correct. Yep, that's the intention.
And the only way to do that would be do the moratorium. Am I understanding that correctly?
I mean, it's one way to do it. It puts a limitation on someone coming forward and doing an application and then coming back and saying, well, now you've changed the rules on us, if we did nothing.
Right.
And studied it without a moratorium in place. So the purpose of the moratorium is just to put the public on notice that it's being studied, and be careful, do not, maybe don't submit an application until we've had our opportunity to complete our study and come back with requested changes, if any.
So if I could just do a follow-up, so to Mr. Hicks's question, if somebody purchased the property and wanted to use it for a use that's not currently defined by the ordinance of the zone, that would have to go through the planning commission. It's just, we're not clear on what that definition of currently of the zone and the usage, right?
I think that's, yeah, that's fair.
That's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Tom. Yeah, and to, you know, to speak to the perception of it, I mean, I'm all for the perception that we are, you know, business-friendly, open to development and all that, but, you know, we have to look at the perception, too, as if somebody purchased the project, or purchased a property with the intention of turning it into an Airbnb or whatever, something that we've never experienced before, that our ordinances are not up to date with, there's, you know, then there's the perception of, yeah, well, you know, I bought this lot in Fergus, and now they're not even going to let me do anything with it. So, I mean, I think taking the time and doing the due diligence, because the, you know, the Airbnb, yada, yada, market has changed so much even in the last five years, that we want to make sure that we're up to date and current and that we, you know, have that in place for when other entities want to come along and provide that type of service in Fergus, if that's, you know, what the planning commission ultimately decides. So, yeah, we don't want to slow any projects down, but I think to make sure we're doing them the right way is pretty important.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, Scott?
I think that Anthony's question is a fair one, in light of the fact that we've updated a lot of resolutions, or a lot of ordinances over the last couple of years, kind of in packages of updating the language, but they maybe didn't have the kind of effect of changing zoning or whatever that this might. So this has got a little more weight to it, and I think that's why it probably justifies moratorium, whereas the other things that we've done, where we've updated code language, were maybe more editorial and not so much affecting the meat of what was going to happen. I don't know if that's the best way to put it or not, but that's kind of the way it strikes me. My first reaction to this when I read it was the same as Anthony's, that why can't we work on this concurrently was his word. I think that's accurate. But I think it's also fair to prospective investors to have a very clear mechanism that this is, for this period of time, under these kind of review, this is the scenario. And then everybody knows they're not going to get caught by surprise at the end of it. So I think it's fair to go ahead with this, but it does take a little bit to grasp what this is all about.
So just one follow-up, then, the mill, have we received an application for that?
We have not.
So they will also be subject to the moratorium?
But by the time they got through their plating and all the process, it's not going to affect the mill.
And I know that some members weren't able to make the last meeting, too, and so just to clarify and reiterate, that property still needs to be rezoned, so it's currently an industrial zone, which does not allow any type of hotel, motel, apartment, hotel. So that's even just one step in the process that they would need to complete, and that has not started. And as the mayor mentioned, that in and of itself is a two-to-three-month process from the initial application.
So we, yeah, okay, go ahead, Brent.
So basically, if somebody were to purchase the Motel 7 that's in this area right now, I mean, they'd have to go through the same thing with the mill. I mean, if they wanted to buy it and then take their chances on it, and they'd have to hope and pray that we allow for a rezoning so they could use it for what they wanted to use it for.
If they don't want to continue to use it as a hotel, motel.
Yeah.
That's currently there.
So we can certainly continue this conversation before we vote for the final reading in second, in two weeks, the second reading in two weeks, but for now, all we need is someone to introduce this ordinance, if someone would like to do that.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Tom. Item, the second item is a resolution decertifying the TIF District 5-8-1, I'm sorry, Somerset Apartments. And Bill, would you like to address that?
Yep. So in your packet, you have an amortization schedule that was put in there for you. It just shows that that note was ending as of December 31st, 2021. So Somerset Apartments, that's the apartments over kind of behind the YMCA. So that was a TIF district and is now done. They didn't receive full funding through that, because of course, that was put as an estimate back in '07, '08, when that was put together. They only received TIF upon, you know, the taxes that they pay, and then that note went through December 31st of 2021. So just asking you to decertify that and return that to the full tax rolls.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Justin, any questions for Bill? It's good to see those projects completed and, you know, fully going back on the tax rolls, so. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number, the third item on our agenda, Item Number 4, is a resolution supporting the submission of a project proposal from the City of Fergus Falls to the AGRI Urban Agricultural Grant Program. And we'll call on our Community Development Manager, Clara Beck, and Councilwoman Gustafson, I believe, worked on this as well.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is kind of a last-minute request. This program just came to our attention. There were some disparate projects that were, the ideas were bubbling up in the community, and we thought this would be a really good opportunity to pull them together. So Councilwoman Gustafson has been working on a Thrive walking route that would encompass NP Park, would include the Lake Region Hospital campus, and then we're hoping it would also start to include things like Otter Cove with the new riverfront development, things like that, and parts of downtown as well could possibly be part of the project. So specifically, this part of it is, has to do with agriculture, educational outreach for youth. So the Agri, Urban Agricultural Grant Program has money available for cities to provide different programming to help teach kids about gardening, agriculture, things like that. So we have been talking about this Thrive program and this walking path and thought maybe a really nice way to bring in some more interactive features is to include an edible garden. So that's what this request is for, is we're going to put together a project proposal to submit to them, to ask to help build some ADA-accessible raised-bed gardens, and then also find some seeds that could be provided for, like, the downtown planters that the city provides in the summer to businesses, and just get a little bit more education going about where food comes from, and involve the library as well. Caroline and Gail have started having some discussions about some educational programs that could also be part of that. So it's pulling together a lot of different little bits and pieces of projects that have been starting to pop up, and I think it's a really great opportunity for us.
Thanks, Clara. And there is no match required on this?
No match requirement.
Just to make that point clear, there is no match required from the city if we were awarded. Thanks for your work on this, Caroline. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think it's going to be hopefully a good collaboration between Lake Region Healthcare and the Lake Region Takes Root Community Garden. Jason Bergstrand's been helping us with that. And then I also talked to Cedar Walters, too. So we're getting a few different entities involved, and we talked to Otter Cove, too, with, you know, obviously, children is a big part of this grant and education, so there's some cool groups of people coming together to try to make this a pretty neat opportunity for Fergus Falls.
Great. Thanks, Caroline. Thanks, Clara, for your work on this. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Supporting that submission? Thanks, Justin.
I do got a question, though. When it comes to the pla, oh, go ahead.
Is it a second, first?
What's that?
Were you seconding that?
I'll second it.
All right, now you go.
Now you can add. The placement of these planners that they're going to be putting out, when I start hearing downtown, I'm not really all excited about that because the downtown area is so cramped as it is. And then they were talking about how Lake Region would maintain the ones on their property, and that we would possibly get the businesses downstairs, downtown, to maintain the ones that would be downtown. Number one, I think it's cramped down there, and would the city council be ones, would be stipulating on where these things would be located?
Well, I know, like, the flowerpots downtown, for example, is a good, maybe might be a good comparison, you know, they reach out to downtown businesses, and those who want to have them in front of their businesses, have the room in front of their business and take care of them are the ones that participate. Is that accurate? Does that be something kind of similar?
Yeah, that's exactly what we talked about.
Okay.
Instead of flowers, it would be veggies?
Exactly. So they would actually be using the flowerpots that the city already provides and that the businesses already understand that they maintain. Does that make sense?
Because, I mean, I'd go along with it, but I honestly would foresee that some of the businesses upfront might be excited about it, but then down the road, they're going to be like, no, we don't want to do this anymore, and I don't want to see it turned over where the city has to start taking over this.
And businesses always have to sign an agreement saying that they will take care of the flowerpots.
And then if they don't, then they'll be removed?
Yep.
Okay, then that's good.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I think that's a great opportunity. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gustafson and staff and the collaboration. I think this is a cool thing, a pretty neat idea, and getting the youth involved to, you know, better their lives and eating healthier with what they're going to plant and do. I think that's a great idea, so, thanks.
Thanks, Justin.
I was going to say that Paul and Amy did veggies in their plot outside of Danielina Burdock, and quite a few of those actually got taken. I mean, it was a free-for-all, you know, so it would work.
That was part of the inspiration.
Yeah.
Yeah, we planted some tomatoes as well outside.
Yeah.
While you hunt.
Yeah, cool. All right. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Upstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $828,143.06. If someone would like to make a motion, a resolution to pay those.
I will offer the resolution to pay the bills.
I will second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions? We'll direct them to our Finance Director. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are no reports from staff, administrative officers, or old business or unfinished business. Under new business, I would look for a motion appointing the 2022 acting mayor. Caroline?
I'll offer that. I'd like to appoint, or make a motion to appoint Councilmember Arneson.
Motion to appoint Councilmember Arneson.
I'll second that.
Sec.
I move nomination cease.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Justin Arneson as the acting mayor for 2022. All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Hail the chief.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Second item is a motion approving the 2022 mayor council appointments. There's a copy on your desk, I believe, and they were emailed. I don't have a copy of it. I'll read through them. Board of Equalization, this year will be councilmembers Fish, Rufus, Arneson, and Hicks. The Business Development for Fergus Falls will be Councilmember Anthony Hicks. Fire Department Relief Association will be the fire chief, the city administrator, and councilmember Jim Fish. Fire Department Trust Fund is the fire chief and councilmember Scott Kwame. Golf Board will, representative from the city council will be councilmember Jim Fish. Jim, you're getting a lot of, a lot of attention here, early on here. Representative of the Hockey Association Board of Directors will be councilmember Caroline Gustafson. The Investment Committee will consist of the city administrator, finance director, Assistant Finance Director, Certified Financial Planner, and councilmember Scott Kwame. Legislative Committee will be the mayor, the city administrator, along with councilmembers Justin Arneson and Tom Rufus. Page Access Board Representative will be councilmember Krista Hagberg. Personnel Committee will be councilmembers Krista Hagberg and Caroline Gustafson. Representing the Senior Center Board Directors will be councilmember Brent Thompson.